So I said, yeah, we don't have too many. So I said, okay, well, I'm going to do team selection. I'm going to be a heartbreaker. You should figure out who's going to get going. Carefully. Uh, she's pretty good. She's about, I'm going to say eighty percent. So better than she was, but not a hundred percent. She's coming through. So she's, we've got to go for one. The New Year's resolution was to actually get off your ass and even do something.
It's dark.
But that's fine. And I said, so she's lying on the couch at 3:30. It's just, it don't look like you've got a lock in you.
I want to walk in a day like this.
Wow, that's unusual. So, so you know, she's not touching brackets, screwing social problems. And it's just two people. Maybe. Things were, uh, so we got, yeah. They didn't go all where they're supposed to. She's not back where she should be. So it's pretty rough. According to her, before she went in, there was going to be a half hour. She was going to be back, uh, twenty hours. So she was a little, you know, when you say, well, you're no squinty chicken anymore. Fifty-three, you're not healing like you're a chicken, right? You know, that's why, yeah. But you know, she's now saying, so.
All right, so we'll call this committee the whole meeting to order. Welcome back to happy new year to everyone. Everyone had a good break. We've got lots of meetings ahead of us. We have, uh, first item would be adoption of the agenda.
Move.
Adoption, all's in favor. Motion carried. Delegations are minister departmental reports, uh, this evening, but we do have staff, a number of staff reports. And the first one is regarding the pedestrian crossings at, uh, Rob Anderson and reporting staff stemming from the delegations here on Saturday. So, uh, that starts at page five, and there are some recommendations there. Uh, we could proceed to put those on the table for discussion, or we could ask some questions, comments.
Can we move both recommendations into that?
Yes, okay. I would do that.
Second.
Moving second for both recommendations and discussion. Anybody, can I ask a question?
Um, well, thanks to Seth for getting this so quickly, and, um, I, I like what has been presented here. What came to mind as I was reviewing this was, we seem to have a bit of a disconnect with our school districts here, and they are a vital part of our community. And I was wondering if when we, when we note in the, the second part there that council requests the school district to complete the safe routes plan, that last week we consider having a council to board meeting once a year or something, just, just so that we're better connected with the issues of the school district? And I'm wondering what other members of council think of that.
You know, we did suggest that last term with council, and I think what they offered is that they would try to keep staff in contact with staff. I mean, they have a, a report, of course, they have one school trustee for COMOx, um, but certainly open to any discussion. So.
Why are we only asking for a safe crossing study for, uh, Rob Road School? What about, you know, Lazo School? I don't think it's as much of a concern for Aspen School, but I know Lazo School. I mean, that, that whole thing's changing now, when, you know, when you've got little kids going there instead of just teenagers.
I guess it's because at this point it came out of a delegation that was on the center regarding Rob Road Schools. Certainly, if you're talking about the safe routes to school plan?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if we've got to ask them for, uh, Rob Road, why don't we expand that request?
You could make an amendment to the motion if you wish.
Yeah, I would do so.
For, uh, for Lazo slash Brooklyn, or whatever they're calling it.
Yeah.
Okay, and is there a second for the amendments?
Can I do that?
Anyway. Okay, any, uh, further discussion now on the amendment? Just only amendment to vote on that first?
Um, no, I, but we're going to go back to, to talk to people to main issue. That's fine.
Okay, on the amendment then, all's in favor? Motion's carried. So the motion's been amended from Rob Road School to Kate Lazo slash Brooklyn School.
So it seems to me with this that, um, if we do our part of this, it would be much enhanced if they did their part as well. Um, and without, um, saying one's contingent upon the other, because it's, you know, it's better to do a part of it rather than none, but what, what are the, um, why wouldn't they be doing this? So is there any reason, you know, I almost want to say, well, we'll do the, we'll do our part contingent upon you guys doing yours. I, I don't really want to do that, but how, like, have we talked to them about doing this? Or what's the?
Ask us.
If we do our part, are they going to do theirs? I guess my question.
Comments from staff on that?
Uh, no, not really. I, I don't think it can be, it should be conditional. I think that, that a safe routes plan should be developed, um, sooner rather than later to address the current situation.
Yep.
As well as, um, let's say if this did make it through the capital plan, um, let's say for its plan afterwards as well. I can't speak for the school district as to.
No, of course.
As to what, um, they, they do or haven't done. And it's something I think that's also coming up in terms of the Brooklyn School as well. So I think that's time.
Yeah, and the motions that pass are, doesn't say for sure that we're doing this crossing, or we're going to consider it or not. So we brought forward that. I have Karen Price and then, uh, Councilor Swift.
Thank you. And, uh, yeah, I certainly support Counselor Fletcher's motion that we do, well, not motion, but suggestion that we talk to the, the school board. I think that'd be a very good dialogue. And I think that, um, this is a very safe way to go, um, and I, I think we've benefited from the COMOx transportation study, and that we actually had it, um, on file. Uh, I did have a friend who was actually hit on a crosswalk in a situation where it's a road had two lanes and someone overtook, um, when he was crossing and overtook the car waiting at the crossing. So I think this, this will be a, a very good solution for what will be an increasingly busy road among Andersons. So I'm happy that we're doing it. I, I guess we will be talking about the financial implications of where we get the fifty-seven thousand when we get to the budget process.
Yes.
And what sort of timeframe would it be that we would see this actually on the ground if everything goes according to schedule?
Yeah, go ahead. If, you know, pending budget approval, you're probably looking about, uh, six to eight weeks for the design, um, and probably another month or so to tender it. We, you know, going by what, uh, the length of time it took to do the works on COMOx Avenue, no more than three months. So it, it could be in place before the next school season starts.
Thank you. I have Counselor Swift and then Counselor Ken.
Um, I'm just concerned that the difference in cost between installing the pedestrian beacon as opposed to the old and splintered. Um, and I'm just wondering about the impact. I know the impact is it's a busy road and so on, but, um, I'm just wondering if there are some times of the day where it's busy and then the majority of time it's not busy at all. I don't see people crossing that street probably.
Right, I don't know if we have a state traffic council referring to, uh, other works.
Well, first of all, the, the vehicle traffic is busy all day. The pedestrian crossing is certainly at its heaviest, um, during the school, when schools both arrive and when it's leaving again. Um, but we have had complaints, uh, outside of those time periods where people are also trying to cross. Regarding my concern, and I tried to dispel this, uh, Anderson is a very busy road. We, we don't have a lot of alternatives to, to Anderson. And my fear, as always, when we look at our materials, is that if we try to chase the traffic off or we make it too difficult, they'll start to look for other routes in other neighborhoods to do nut running, or however you wish to call it. And that's when the problem is going to spread, and it's going to become quite, uh, difficult for us to deal with. I, I think when we look at our transportation plan, it, it has to assume that some of these roads, like Guthrie's, like the Andersons, like the, the first portion of COMOx Avenue, are going to retain their, their primary purpose of moving vehicles. So I, this is why I'm kind of hesitant to try to introduce the beacons, because I can see a situation where a single student walks up, hits the beacon, stops the traffic, crosses, and then just after that, the next student comes along, hits the beacon. So you're going to have too many interruptions. So to the driver, they're going to start to ignore that beacon, they're going to start to drive through it, uh, or they're going to start looking for a whole other path to get to where they want to go. And that's my concern. And that's, that's where I see the advantage of the, the island in this Florida island, uh, because under normal conditions, when there isn't a pedestrian waiting to cross there, they can continue to do their, uh, make their way up and down Anderson with a little interruption.
Counselor Ken.
Just a quick comment, although I can't speak for the school district, I think the timing's right to prompt dialogue between it. They have a new management supervisor there, which, it lends itself well, as well as new board members. Um, so the timing's good for, to prompt that kind of dialogue. And thirdly, a supportive motion, because, uh, the Brooklyn School moved to Lazo was that there's, there's a larger population base there, and that's what they change in the middle of the year. The first week is, is chaos, because people don't anticipate the traffic, the patterns there. Uh, there isn't a crosswalk, and probably there is some justification to look at in the, uh, school district as well, so, and that might be a good starting point to prompt a dialogue.
All right, so for the motions, then we have one and two. Maybe we're going to deal with a supplemental in terms of inviting representation from the school board here, or whatever format you want to have. Um, so all those, have you got any for the vote? All those in favor? Yeah, put those motions carried. And is there a supplemental? Um, I was remembering, actually, we did have previous council attendance here by the school board chair and the COMOx trustee at one point in time, and a couple times. So that might be approached, we invite them to one of their, uh, meetings or committees over here or something. So that might be a way to do it, might present our ideas perhaps. Yes?
Do you want to motion, or do you want to leave that with staff?
No, I think, uh, you should have a motion.
And so I want to mention that staff invite school board representation to meet with council.
You're talking about the school board chair and COMOx trustee?
Yeah, I think that, that works well, as we get that, most of the whole board.
Right. Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor? The opposed? Motion's carried. All right, so we'll invite the school board chair and trustee to, uh, maybe hold perhaps in February or whatever.
Now, would that be to discuss this issue? Would that be an issue that would be on there?
It would be, whatever, any issues.
And, and general.
Related to COMOx School.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So I just see the crossing guards being a real key to this whole thing, especially if we do the island, and I'd like to hear from them what their thoughts are.
Well, certainly, once this motion's passed to council next week, send them a letter. And one, like, of course, at the same time. And I know staff are working with, um, their school board staff regarding Kate Lazo Brooklyn in terms of some of the improvements they want to make on sites. That'll be up for discussion. All right, so that's all carried. Uh, moving on, then, I think we can move on now to, uh, page nine. This is a report from our Director of Finance on proposed marine rates for 2012. Counselor Swift.
I think if we can defer this until after we have our strategic planning session, because there could be something coming out of our strategic plan that could affect these rates. And, uh.
Okay, so you make a motion to postpone?
Yeah.
Okay, and is there a second here?
I'll second that.
And staff, in terms of timing, that's, uh, I'm asking the Director of Finance, I know you want to send bills out at some point in the future, so if this gets postponed till sometime middle February, is that, how's that going to affect you?
Um, the effect is that the bills won't go out till probably through March, and people have to pay by March 31st, so those get less notice. Uh, but those that have been asking, or our marina caretaker, have been told that we're anticipating a three percent rate increase subject to council approval.
So we can bring this back following strategic planning? I think the second session of strategic planning is on the eighth, so we can bring it back to pass as early as the fifteenth. And maybe something we can bring directly to council, other than, in fact, a power of, probably anybody on this show. All right, and any further discussion as to timing and place?
I, I just don't think our marina manager should be quoting any, any figure at all.
Right. Yeah, it's, uh, I guess that was, it's always up to councils approved.
Yeah. We don't want to get hamstrung by what's, uh, somebody's saying, so.
Any further discussion? All's in favor? Motion's carried. So we'll bring that back to Nick Beverley. Okay, for information, we have a report from our, uh, front superintendent on closed locations for marine front vending kiosks, and this is just simply for receipt at this time?
Move your seat.
On receipt, all's in favor? Motion's carried. Any questions, comments for this matter? It was directed to staff, though. Counselor, uh, see you.
Just for clarification, uh, from the, the time of writing this memo, we've, we've did a little more research, and, and we've provided an estimate here of five to ten thousand dollars for the servicing work, but for budgeting purposes, uh, to include town staff doing the work, including town wages, that number, uh, we'd feel better about looking at, say, twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. That's the, that would be what we would call true cost of duty.
Okay. All right. Counselor, please.
So this, this two will go to budget compensation, and then it will come back, or this?
Imagine they'll come up, both, uh, strategic planning, uh, in terms of general concept, and then also budgeting. Yes. Okay. Nothing further, then we'll move on. Another report for receipt, the town of Comox Water System, 2011 test result.
Move your seat.
Yeah, is it second on the seat, all's in favor? Motion's carried. Any comments, questions for our, uh, public books you think? All right, keep up the good work. So moving along, uh, again, for receipt, the 2010 crime stats report.
Move your seat.
Second.
On receipt, then, all's in favor? Motion's carried. Any comments, questions? I don't know if it's been reported on in any newspapers already. And of course, it will form some background information for strategic planning as well. And by the way.
I mean, I think it's great that crime is going down, and, uh, and it certainly shows it well for COMOx. And I, it was interesting to note that, uh, policing costs have actually nearly doubled in ten years. So, uh, yes. Hopefully, we won't be faced with the greater costs of getting over fifteen thousand in population. That would be a.
Great. Yes, and first, what you're referencing there is the fact that when the council's by position does exceed fifteen thousand, we pay that ninety percent of policing costs as opposed to seventy percent, which is our current level. And I know that policing costs across the province have been a concerning, of course, a form part of the negotiations that the House had with the Fed recently for the new twenty-year contracts. Costs on that are always a concern, for sure. Thank you, Fred. Seeing none. Uh, again, another report for receipt is the 2011, uh, September.
Move your seat.
Second.
Report, okay. And receipt, all's in favor? Motion's carried. Comments, questions? Thank you very much for the report. Everyone should have gotten an assessment, so you'll see the effects. Mostly staff.
I'll see those for later. You can see the number now.
Well, assessments are more or less flat, two percent maybe increase over. Great, okay. So now we have some report here on carry forwards from 2011 to 2012, and a specific recommendation that staff be authorized for these items. So either do them all at once, or separately?
I'll do the recommendation.
Okay, so all, all is moved. Is there a second here?
A second.
Discussion. Counselor Tom.
Are, are these figures that you're asking to carry over, are they actual numbers, or are they just still budget numbers?
Um, by and large, I've adjusted the budget that I'm asking to carry forward to what we think the actual cost would be. The department heads were asked to confirm that the amounts, uh, that were budgeted were still outstanding. But a good example is, uh, for instance, um, uh, water meter. Okay, so we've asked to carry forward fourteen thousand, uh, of the budget, um, but there's several hundred thousand that we didn't spend.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So I'm just asking to carry forward the fourteen that's needed to restore landscaping, sidewalks, pavement, paths, those sorts of things.
Okay. Any further? Seeing none, all's in favor? The opposed? Motion's carried. All right, so moving along, uh, CBRD are calling a monitoring program contribution agreement, a report from our CAO with recommendations. Uh, is there anyone who wishes to make a motion to remove those recommendations?
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
And discussion. Counselor Tom.
I've got a real problem with this. Not that it's a whole bunch of mine. It's seventeen or eighteen hundred dollars, but I took the time to go on their website, and that air quality monitor in Courtney shows a reading of two on a scale of one to ten, one being good, ten being bad. Princeton shows two, Vancouver shows two, everybody shows two. It's almost meaningless information. If, if our air quality, I mean, if this thing is, this scale's got to be so grand, that if our air quality is the same as Vancouver, why do we even bother monitoring? Like, how bad could it get to get past two? Really?
You might be different in some, or you're saying it's two since the summer.
Well, I mean, if you look at the, uh, you know, what were the courses they're monitoring, it's two, 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 everywhere. The whole, I mean, if you look at every, every municipality in British Columbia that has one of these things, everybody's reading is two on a scale of one to ten.
So when Vancouver, it's got to be somebody else's and not paying.
But I mean, that's, it's just.
Staff have any information on that?
I may notice the province spent over a hundred thousand dollars installing this monitor. Couldn't.
That doesn't mean that we have to, you know, maybe they should spend the seven thousand dollars a year monitoring this thing, or tweak it so it at least gives us a reading that's meaningful.
I, I can't speak.
Well, maybe if we withheld our seventeen hundred dollars, maybe somebody could get in the bottom of this.
It will be, uh, something that you could bring forward as well in regional district.
Oh, are you sure you like with?
However, at this moment, the motion hasn't been made, so is there any further discussion? Yes, Counselor.
And can this, I know it's a small amount, but can this money come out of the gas tax money in the regional district? That's where they're looking for their share.
From ours, uh, don't worry. You can look at that, I'm sure.
I don't know if it qualifies as a pastic deli study. I don't know in what way it changes our development or operational plans.
It is to do with.
It is. Uh, most of the gas tax money gets spent on capital projects.
Well, the RD's been using it. Been using it for this.
Well, staff can look into that, I'm sure.
But we can't show any measurable change, but it always says two.
How could we not want it?
We should be zero.
Go on their website. It's the most, I don't know. It seems to be a colossal waste of money.
All right, so any further questions? Seeing none, all's in favor? All's opposed? Okay, I got it. Just two votes, on and count. Motion's carried. Okay, and then page forty-seven, uh, again, just for receipt at this time, uh, regarding the development inquiry of the heritage church, uh, 2182 COMOx Avenue, with further information that staff has brought up.
So I'll move your seat to that.
Thank you. Second to that? On receipt, then, all's in favor? Motion's carried. Any further comments or, or comments?
And I just wonder when we would make a decision on this. Um, I, I greatly support this project. I've been very concerned about this, about this church for many years. It's been in a serious state of disrepair, so, oh, I think ever since the Catholic, uh, faith stopped using it as a, as a place of worship. And, um, when you think how few, um, that's one of two heritage buildings in COMOx, and how few buildings we have of heritage quality. And just noting in a report that was written in nineteen eighty-four, it says it is one of the few authentic nineteenth-century landmarks in the COMOx Valley. So if somebody's willing to come along and spend the risk of their own money on renovating the church, and there's a lot of work in that church, I went in there, it was ten years ago, I was trying to get a project to get some renovation, and it was in serious state. Um, I, I did pick up from the delegation last time that, um, she was in, that speed was important to her, that she's put her own house on the line with a mortgage and stuff like that. So I wonder when would we make a decision? What, what is the next step in making a decision? I was thinking that today we could look at that, whether we're willing to allow a tax extension, and given that we don't get taxes on the property anyway, we aren't at the moment, and haven't, well, ever, I think, um, we're certainly not losing anything. The house, as I understand, is rented and has been rented for years, so fast-tracking that process to, uh, to, you know, so that it actually says it, it comes in a zone that can be rented, you know, it doesn't seem like major things, so I just wonder if we can't make a decision today on it.
I know our staff has been talking to the applicants. Um, what are the next steps for this, this applicant? I guess they would have to make a formal application of some kind.
They would have to make a formal application for, uh, for zoning, um, in the development department. Have they made application, or anything yet?
No.
They're just still waiting for council.
If council was, uh, council was interested in granting, um, the exemption, and if council's, uh, is willing, well, I guess, if council's willing to grant the exemption, is council willing to fast-track, like, to issue?
Two aspects to it. In terms of, I understand that the applicant would have to make a zoning application, a deed application, but as far as the, um, exemption program, we don't have one currently. We have to direct staff to prepare one, is that what would happen to applicant? So that might be appropriate for a motion.
I would move that we make, uh, direct staff to, uh, look at a program for tax exemptions for, you know, instances of this nature. I think this is an unusual situation, and given that we only have two heritage buildings, one's a building of large, which is pretty secure, this is the only heritage building we have that's really in private ownership.
Does that like a viola, essentially? So it'd be a tax exemption program viola? So it'd be a tax exemption program bylaw? All right, so that's been moved. Is there a second? Discussion.
Okay, well, I had my hand up before we got into that because my concern with this is not so much that we would be saving the church and all of that. You know, I think that's a very admirable thing, but I'm concerned about the viability of the business that's going to go there. And I know we just got a report today, it was in our box, and I haven't really had a chance to go through it yet thoroughly, but I think that that's a major part of whether or not we would give someone exemptions. It doesn't make any sense to give someone an exemption for two or three or five years or however long it would be on the basis it's not viable. So I think that we really need to know the viability of what we're doing here before we get too far into this. Now, whether we look at something for tax exemptions on heritage buildings, I think that's a separate issue from this one in some ways. But to me, you know, I had a really, a really quick look at this and I really want to do a little more homework on it to make sure, but to me, that's a key component as to whether you, we would do that because we'll be tying up tax dollars for the town of Comox and if five years from now, all of a sudden we start taxing and A, that puts them in a position where they can't pay, where they couldn't pay in the first place, then we really have tied up tax figure dollars. So I think that, I think that we need to look at that part of it as well.
Yeah, I assume that any bylaw would be, would not be specific to this property necessarily, but I would work.
I think if you're looking at something specifically for heritage purposes, it almost would apply just to this property because it is the only heritage property we have outside of Filbert. There are other programs that are broader or smaller.
We haven't specifically said heritage at this point from the motion. Yes, Counselor Brace?
I would say, I mean, you know, one would hope her business is viable and she is undertaking to put a considerable amount of money into this building and for her sake, I hope the business is viable. But aren't we looking at the actual heritage building? If she does all the work, completes it, we have restored heritage buildings and she hasn't done her homework properly and, you know, the business doesn't work out, isn't that really her problem? I don't see how that would affect the town, you know. I'm sure another use would come along. I can't see how the town is at risk at the moment. We don't get any taxes from this building anyway and never have. It's a church, so I don't see that we're giving anything up. And this is the first time I've ever seen any likelihood that we were, if we leave that building much longer, we won't have an issue because it'll fall down. It won't, you know, it'll be beyond repair, which often happens to heritage buildings that they fall into such disrepair that you lose them by default. So I, if somebody comes along, if he's willing to put that time and energy and money into it, I would hope that we could find a way to work with her. And at the moment, it would be specific to this one, but there may be other heritage buildings in the future in Comox. There is, you know, no reason, who knows what council at some state, whether 20 years from now, may deem some buildings heritage. So I don't see that going ahead with the, that staff report could have any downsides.
Well, if the motion passes, it would be brought back to council for consideration of a bylaw and staff would have to work on the terms of that bylaw and using other communities' examples and bring it here for the discussion. So a motion that passed today simply sets staff to work on this. In terms of timeframe, I would imagine it's something that would be brought back to probably the county in February, the very earliest, actually around the 27th of February. We could have time as council can grant, point of view of looking at the viability, but ultimately it will be the proponents, just like any other proponents, in a development to determine whether it's viable. It's not our role to potentially babysit the applicant in terms of its business success, although of course we'd want to make sure that it fit within the criteria of this program.
Well, and also, you know, we are giving some significant tax breaks and other things and I think that we're now, we now are involving tax dollars when we do that. And so I think it is incumbent upon us to make sure that there is at least some hope that there's some viability there. So I do think that it does fit that criteria.
Right, and certainly whatever the program would look like, someone would have to be eligible under the criteria. You have to be seen by us here today. Other communities have their criteria and the applicant would have to meet those criteria and council would have to decide whether they qualify at that time. Counselor Swift?
I think one of the decisions we would have to consider as a council is what would be the downside for the town? In other words, if the building got partially done and they were no longer able to continue, then what happens? I think the project itself is very exciting and I fully support the concept. I'm just wondering, again, how viable it is and so on. You know, I don't think it's our place to decide whether it is viable, but what would be the downside for the town? So that's my concern. The other question I have, and this is just because I don't know, I know churches are exempt from taxes, but this is no longer a church and I wonder why it's exempt from taxes?
Director Finance, can I add to that?
It's still acting as a church. It's a place of worship for the Lutherans. It's owned by the Bishop of Victoria of the Roman Catholic Diocese, but it's still used as a worship place by Lutherans.
Did we get taxes on the host that's there?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, applicants, this church and other church type properties and a few other properties in town that apply every year for tax exemptions. So council has to resolve that, I think it's by the end of October.
We provide an exemption for the western side of the property, which has the church and hall on it. We provide, provide an exemption for the land around the church and hall. The church and hall and the land that it sits on immediately is statutorily exempt, so we don't need to grant that. But we give a permissive exemption to the strip of land that surrounds the church and hall.
Okay. So the motion is essentially to direct staff to prepare a tax exemption program bylaw for consideration by council and be brought back, hopefully second county of February for review. Any further discussion?
Now with this, so would that report be an overall tax exemption bylaw or would it be, again, specific to heritage? Or is that something that you guys all?
We'll look at both options because we are, we are essentially having a discussion and a dialogue about an overall program as well.
That's what I was getting at, so there's no point in dubbing it twice.
Okay. Anything further on that? See, no, all's in favor of the motion? It was opposed? Motion's carried. I believe that is it for the agenda. We do have a camera meeting.
If we're seeking clarification, I guess we should seek some clarification on the fast-tracking request.
Oh, yes. So in terms of, I guess, timing on this, the applicant has not yet made a motion, sorry, an application to rezone the property, but staff needs to know whether they would, should be supported on a fast-track basis as noted on page 49, that we're potentially delaying our previous disney rezoning applications and so on and so forth. So is there a motion? Further comments? Counselor, answer that.
Question to the chair to staff. So the present house that exists there, is it not zoned for residential or can it only be inhabited by the church or can it be rented out?
I believe it's in, in a facility use to church.
The places of worship are allowed and then accessory uses there too that are customarily incidental and subordinate, so that would allow for a residence for typically the reverend or pastor or whatever of a place of worship. So what it sounds like has happened is that's how it originally was and when the Catholic Diocese no longer used it themselves, they rented it out, which would have been, which is in violation of the current zone. And that's part of the, because that's a key aspect of the proponents' business plan. That's why they want to get that resolved, make sure they have full legal standing to do that.
Counselor?
Well, before we agree to fast-track an application, I think this is where we could step in and ask for a viable business plan. Because if it's not, if it's not a viable business plan, here we are spending staff time and fast-tracking something that maybe should not go ahead, so. I'd like to see a viable business plan before we start fast-tracking.
Well, there's a business plan circulating, so have a look at that. So, Counselor, question?
Well, just back to the house, please. I mean, I understand someone rents it right now and that's perhaps an oversight or that the church is just not aware that it's not actually truly conforming. And I think that's a good piece to our housing stock to have a rental house and Comox is always a great asset. So I'd like to see it fast-tracked so that it's cleaned up for everyone, for the present owner and for a potential new owner and for the community. That's a good piece to the housing stock, so I would support that.
Counselor Price?
Yes, and for that reason too, I would support it. I'm not generally in favor of fast-tracking and stepping around the Heritage Planning Commission, but it is used as a rental house. I mean, I mean, do we as a town wish to have our bylaw enforcement officer to take the people? I mean, that's if we're going to take it to that. I always think it's something that we would be very supportive of having resolution on. And I think it's to her credit, the applicant's credit, that she wants to make sure that every eye is dotted because I'm sure a priest hasn't lived in that house for many, many years, so it's been an ongoing situation. So I would, I would support that means of fast-tracking and I'd also like to include the sprinklers. That was another point mentioned by the planner and I think, I think that would be a viable, a viable issue.
Sprinklers is related to the church itself.
To the church, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I don't think we have a motion yet, so is there a motion that we direct staff to accept on a fast-track basis a zoning application for the house?
I would move that.
I'm second to that. See, was that appropriate wording there?
So is this simply a?
Sorry?
I just want, if that passed, it would be staff understanding then that what we would, the amendment would allow for a house in conjunction with an assembly use, such as a place of worship. Otherwise, the house just gets carted off. As you can see, this is one of the key things that makes that community aspect viable is that rental street.
I believe that's it.
Okay, so I just want to be 100% clear what we're doing here. If we're going to fast-track this, we're simply talking about the rezoning for the rental house?
Yes, I think.
Is that all we're talking about?
Yes, we would roll, we have a historical issue with that zone. It's a public assembly zone, similar to our rec center. And one of the things that always comes up in our public assembly zones is restaurant use. A lot of them like to have a little restaurant, Filbert as well comes up with this. And right now, they're really limited to ensuring that anybody who goes in cannot do anything or attract, try to bring people in from out, that aren't already on the site. Like so, for example, on the Filbert, the idea that if you have a restaurant and asking for people who are there to enjoy the Filbert grounds, it can't be a restaurant that's, then trying to advertise and get most of its business just to come into that restaurant. It puts a very big limit. So we would roll that allowance into that same zoning. That's the only one that we have.
So the ancillary use aspect?
Yes, that we would allow. Well, we guess that restaurants would be probably just a flat-out permitted use in those areas, preparation of foods. Also, a lot of times they have commercial kitchens, like our rec center, that are very good for people doing catering or something else like that. It really helps to support the public uses.
But not at commercial zoning, is it?
No, just those uses.
Okay. So we're all clear on that? Okay, any further discussion on that motion?
I guess I'm, I'm just needing a little bit of clarification on if we fast-track this, how, how much faster since one month's time seen and how much the way we create applications on the queue.
Question.
Well, the two, the two ways of fast-tracking, one is no referral to the APC, that saves about a month of processing time. That's not going to impact other applications in the queue. The second, we bring it up in the queue, make it the next application that we pull. Essentially what happens is as we finish off an application, the next one that we would pull is the one that's been fast-tracked. And that just means everybody behind them are bumped. And what we do have is, we're doing very well, we've caught up now fully on our subdivisions, on our high priority, like the secondary suites, we've maintained really well. The more complex rezonings, we do have a backlog. A lot of them, some of them got held up because the OCP was underway and they couldn't proceed until the OCP issues were done up. I mean, typically on a report like that, you're looking at terms of staff time involved Blocks them off probably for three weeks.
So total time, can you give us an estimate of how long this particular application would take and what, would it delay other ones perhaps by as much as three weeks, you say?
Yes, it would essentially would delay other ones by about three weeks of staff time.
And the timeframe for this, if it moves up the top of the chain is, once the applicant is applied, et cetera?
Yes.
I would anticipate approximately four months. Okay. Anything further on that? Do you have your hand up, Counselor, for the second?
Okay, well, I just, I just want to be, so we're going to be putting this tax exemption thing together and this is all contingent upon the same client here, so how long is that going to take to work together? Because it kind of, to me, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to fast-track something if it's going to take, she's not going anywhere with this until we get the tax exemption thing done anyway. So if that's gonna, you know, if we're going to delay other people in the queue and then we got to wait at the other end anyway, that doesn't make much sense, so.
Well, we have the applicant, obviously, to decide when she wants to make application.
I understand, but if we're going to be doing this other thing at the same time and let's, you know, soon she's going to come in soon, I would think that would be her goal because she's saying there's a timeframe issue here. I mean, it's going to be six months to do one and then we're delaying people on the other end when we could be doing them at the same time. It doesn't make sense to do that.
I don't know what her intentions would be, but I would imagine she would not apply for rezoning until she knew she had a tax exemption program she could apply in.
Right.
So I do believe that in the earliest way, we would be looking at the bylaws sometime in February, at the beginning of March, you know, then if she decides she wants to apply, then she'd be looking at that. At that point, if she does make an application, hers would go to the top of the queue. I don't believe she would apply prior to the tax exemption program being brought into effect, otherwise she'd be risking an application for something that she may not be able to use and that's her decision, so.
I'm just thinking in terms of some of the other applicants that I happen to know of that have been, you know, they, they find the queue to be long already and, you know, bumping them back, some of them have been there for a long time already and so to bump them back is just going to further annoy them. And so I'm looking for a way to get both of these things going at the same time so that we don't, she's going to wind up in the same place at the other end of the day.
Always be, often she'll apply. Right? So we just said that when she does apply, we would potentially consider this, it's still subject to a vote here, but on a fast-track basis to deal with the house and ancillary uses to the tax exemption program, staff will work on that as they can and bring us a report hopefully towards the end of February. Nobody's getting bumped until such time as she would apply. I hope I've got that right.
But they will get bumped when she does.
Yes.
So that delay.
By about three weeks.
Yeah.
Counselor Brace?
Yes, so do we know, and you know, I guess it's a question of the planner, her intent of putting an application in, has she stated, is, you know, is she waiting to see what's happening with the tax exemption? Has she shown any indication of applying?
I mean, to date, it's been, it's the two items. Now, what, if one item is cleared, i.e. the fast-tracking, and the other one is waiting for a bylaw to be done, I mean, that would be. for a bylaw to be done, I mean, that would be her decision. What we'd simply explain to her is one of the other options that she has, she could apply right now. It's not like tomorrow, we're picking up a new file, she'll apply right now, we take the money. If we don't pick up the file, like, so she's in a holding pattern, right, even if we do referrals out, we don't pick up the file, and the tax issue is, let's say, defeated prior to us picking up the file, we will refund the application fee, because we haven't started our bulk of work on it. So, and that's a risk that we just explained to applicants in situations like this, that what's more important is time, or money is more important to you. And here's the risk, let us know what you'd like to do, and we leave it up to the applicant.
Anything further? There is a question. So I think we've got the motion, everyone's clear that we would accept on a fast-track basis an application by her to rezon the house and deal with the ancillary uses. All is in favor? Opposed? Two opposed, motion's carried. All right, thank you, CEO, for bringing that to our attention, that was important, I didn't allow this. And now I believe it would be in order to, in camera meetings, to be initiated by a motion that's due to the public under section ninety, can you start it? Can I hear that?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Motion's carried. We're adjourned until the room is.